So just to let you know, my name's Jason Howe and I'm a technical advisor for City and Guilds for Construction. And my portfolio is T-levels amongst a couple of other parts of the portfolio I look after, such as property maintenance and our prison contract. So I work with my colleague Rob Mannender, who is also a technical advisor and he covers BSE as well. Okay, so quickly moving on. Using Teams, just very, very similar to probably how you've been using it with either your learners or for your own meetings and stuff. There isn't a lot of us on the call today, but just to keep things in order. If you do want to ask questions, give a comment, whatever that may be, please, I encourage that throughout. But obviously if others are speaking, if you can put your hand up, it's easier to introduce you into the conversations and allow you that time to make some comments without talking over each other there. We've got the chat bar as well. I will be asking you to put a couple of things in the chat bar as we go along. But again, if you want us to record any questions, again, if you've got any comments or feedback. Mark, I'm going to mute you mid because there's a bit of background noise. Just as on to the next point, if you can go on mute until you're ready to speak, that would be great as well. Because we're all working from home at the minute and I've got two young boys. Can often make a lot of noise, so apologies if you hear any background noise from me. So, and as I've said, I am going to be, and it's already started recording. So moving on, this is what we are going to cover. I'm going to introduce some of the guys who I work with internally at City and Guilds in EAL. Then we're going to do something different. We're going to actually go onto our website and show you where everything is basically. Show you where the qualification handbook is, where the assessments lie and everything else. How you can find the qualification on the website because of, you know, because of our offer is so big. And quite often, some of these things can get lost. So there's a few ways I'll show you how you can get to that. Then we'll actually just delve right in really. Have a look at the handbook, have a look at the plaster and content. Have a look at some other bits and pieces that will be useful to you, especially in the early stages of getting prepared to deliver this. Then we'll have a chance for a bit of a discussion, Q and A, whatever you want to call it. I'll give you an update on what Hutter Education and ourselves, what we're doing as well by way of resources to support delivery and what opportunities are out there. Then again, just at the end, there's a little bit of time if we needed for Q and A. We're not going to cover progression today. We're not going to cover industry placements. And we're not really going to look at the assessments in that much detail. Because what we hopefully want to be able to achieve from today is that you can find everything you need to find. Hopefully have a look at the assessment, the sample assessments on the website. And then on a future webinar, you'll be able to come with a bit more of an insight and get more familiar with it in that sense. So just a quick round to introduce you to who is who at City and Guilds in EAL. So as I mentioned, my name's Jason Howe. I'm a technical advisor for construction. And I have Rob Mannender, who's also a technical advisor, looks after BSE. And we're supported by our industry managers. And for construction, we have Nas Lewis Humphrey. And for BSE, we have Saleem Vizram. We also have another technical advisor who's got a wealth of experience in sort of technical education and post-16 education. And that's Alison Willan. She has come into the fold as of late as well, probably Novemberish time, even before that maybe. Supporting myself and Rob with the rollout and the implementation of the T-levels for centres. Then we have Michael Scarrett. Now, none of these people are on the call today. I will mention that. But we have Michael Scarrett and he's a product specialist from EAL. He does a similar role to myself and Rob and Alison, what we do at City and Guilds. He's kind of our equivalent over at EAL. And the relationship between all of us is rock solid. And obviously between City and Guilds and EAL, we've worked very well collaboratively to pull together the qualification specs and all of the assessments accordingly. Yes, EAL, to be fair, doesn't really touch construction, if at all. So, but just to let you know that we are working in partnership with them. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to hop off this presentation. I'm going to hop onto the website and just show you how you can find the qualification to start off. But when, you will get this presentation sent out to you later today as well. And as much, you'll get a recording of the session as well. But if you forget which we have gone through the website, there's a few slides on here which will also show you how you can get to the website and how things look on the website, et cetera. So there'll be a few prompts in there for you as well. But I am going to just quickly, I'm going to stop sharing the presentation and I'm going to try and share the website. So hopefully everybody can see that website, yes? Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Brilliant. So on the website, there's actually three ways you can actually find the T-level qualification. When I logged onto this yesterday, straight away, this website banner popped up. So it just seemed to happen ideally. But again, you can just follow that link there and it'll take you through to the qualification. But often these website banners do change, obviously, with new announcements and everything else. So that's not always going to be there. But just lo and behold, it is at the minute. It's a quick way of getting to it if you wish. Another way is just straight through the search bar. So you can go in there and just type in 8711 and search for it. And it takes you straight to the construction onsite T-level. I don't know why it brings up beauty therapy. Maybe they think there's some form of sort of link there between construction and beauty therapy, who knows? But yeah, you can get straight through to the qualification that way as well. Just jumping back onto the homepage, another way you can get to it is if you go into our T-level section of our website and scroll down slightly, you'll see construction and building services engineering. Again, you can click into there and there is 8711, which again will take you straight to the qualification or 8710 if you're looking for BSE. But the other thing that's interesting on this page is we have a 12-month countdown timeline, sort of calendar, if you like. And that kind of highlights what we've got coming up in the future as well. So there could be events on there that may be of interest here. And our comms will continuously lay out registration links and stuff. Other things that are quite useful, we've got the communications archives. So any bulletins that we've done are on there and previous webinars. So if you've missed something from this week, you know, the construction painting, I mean, the paint and decorating one only happened yesterday. That's already on there with a recording of the webinar. Carpe and joinee was Tuesday. Bricklaying was Monday. But we had a core webinar in December. We had familiarization webinars in November. So all that information is on the website as well, on that T-levels page if you need it. So that's another way you can get to it. Or going back to our home screen, if you go into qualifications, and this is probably the route you're more familiar with, and go and select construction. Again, we have 50 qualifications and it is in here somewhere. There it is. So right next to BIM and between maintenance and joinery is the T-level. So you can click into it that way as well. What you will find is that the layout of the website page is exactly the same and very, very similar to, you know, previous website pages that we've got for other qualifications. And you've got your general drop-down boxes, what's involved in studying this course, what can it lead to, what's involved in delivering it. So that just gives you a little bit of insight into that as well. And if you do need it, there's a link there, a little bit of guidance to industry placements. So I just wanted to show you that. I know we're not going to go in it in detail because technically nothing to do with us. But there is some guidance there that takes you straight to the DFE's website and that's hopefully helpful for you. So I'll close that part. And then when you can look at the actual qualification information. So the technical qualification for construction onsite is 8711-30. And it gives you the registration dates and the accreditation numbers, the QUAN numbers, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of information on there, usually for what you guys need to set up courses and stuff. Then you went to documents and I'm going to show you centre documents first, just quickly. And that's where the qualification handbook is. And that's what we're going to have a quick look at in a minute. But I also wanted to just show you the assessment materials. So at the minute, we've got sample assessment materials laid out. So just quickly as well, before we go into that, you'll see here, you've got 8711-30 and that's the T-level construction onsite qualification and covers the core unit. So when you're registering your learners, you will register them against that code. And you will also need to register them against this code as well, 8711-38 for plastering. Because as much as we're used to our unit, our qualifications being unitized, they've now gone into components. So plastering is one component or one unit, if you like. So it's colossal. And it's sectioned up sequentially as well. So hopefully it'll follow a flow. But it is one component now. So just quickly looking at core, when you're looking there, we've got all of the sample assessments on there. And just look at how many we've created. Candidate guidance, centre guidance, marking grids, project briefs, research reports, project plans. And this is just for the employer set project. So there's so much on there to support formative assessment, to support you guys when delivering and what's expected with regards to the content of the employer set projects as well and how we can mark. So hopefully that is helpful for you. Then you've got the sample core exams. So there's two there, one for each paper. So we have paper one and paper two. And there is the learner's edition and then obviously the tutor's edition as well. So that's there for you with regards to the core. And then looking at plastering, because these qualifications being T-level, they are assessed slightly different to our usual QCF qualifications. So there will be assessment windows over the two year of the programme. So the core is and the exams and the employer set project, they all take place in year one. There are retake opportunities in year two, but hopefully you won't need them. And then the practical synoptic assessment is done at the end of year two. And the assessment for, the synoptical assessment for each occupational specialism, such as plastering, that only happens once a year. So if a learner was to fail it, they'd have to wait another 12 months to take it again, unfortunately. And that is assessment guidelines and windows that we have little influence over. So that's how you find the information on the website. So hopefully, you know, you can go on and start having a look at it. Then you can go into the qualification handbook. Hopefully you can all still see my page. And then it goes into the handbook in a bit more detail. So what I wanted to do now, just very quickly, is go onto our website. Hopefully you can, you know, not close this page where you can minimize it if you've only got one device. Log on to City and Guilds website, see if you can locate the qualification handbook. And then what I'm going to do is I'm going to share the presentation again. And just a bit of a task really, just to help you guys as much as anything. Because what we want to try and do is make sure that people are aware of the, a lot of the pages that's usually skimmed over or, you know, quickly overlooked. Because when we get a qualification handbook, and I was guilty of this myself, you basically want to know what you're delivering. So you'll go straight to the units. But there's other parts in there that's important and we need to raise awareness of that. So log on to the, onto the website, open up the logbook. And, sorry, the qualification handbook, not the logbook. And basically see if you can find the GLH program. See if you can find the component number as well, because that's important. And the component number is important because that's the assessment number as well. So when booking in the assessments, you're going to need that. Then you've got obviously the GLH on there as well, which is important and TQT. And that will help, your GLH obviously will help you when you're planning this out via a scheme of learning, et cetera, or a curriculum plan. Then just quickly looking at the resource requirements and the initial assessment and induction requirements as well. So I'll give you a couple of minutes. It won't take long. You don't need to put anything in the chat bar for this. Just raise your hands when you've had a good look and you're comfortable basically with finding that type of information. Whilst you're looking for that, I'll just, I'll pick up on a couple of other bits that's, not, well, going slightly off topic in a sense, but still relevant as well. So I'll give you a couple of minutes to do that. Whilst you're doing it, I just wanted to sort of raise a couple of things really. At City and Guilds, we're always looking for new associates, new consultants, new developers. People that we can work with who are from the education sector, such as FE, private train providers, colleges, et cetera, who've been in the industry and who are able to support with our development and validation of our qualifications and products. So basically, we're kind of just reaching out really. Would you like to be involved in the development of resources or the development and validation of qualifications and other products that we might put out there? Yes, you know, for the vast majority of what we ask, there are fees attached. So if you're developing products for us, whether it's, you know, resources or assessment papers or exam questions or even qualification units, that type of thing, any of our products. If you are interested in that type of thing and you'd like me to forward on your details to our development team, just quickly put it in the chat, just put, yes, I'm interested, something like that, or just yes, I'll do. And what I'll do following this is I'll share your information with our development team and they would be in touch kind of as and when required, you know, that we need people to in support with the development of plastering products. So if you are interested in that, please let us know. The other thing just to make you aware of as well is, this is going slightly off topic. For the apprenticeship standards, we are recruiting LEAPers, which is leading independent endpoint assessors, and IEPers, which is independent endpoint assessors for all of our apprenticeship standards now. So again, all of those vacancies are on our website. And if you're interested, you know, please click on City and Guilds website, go to our associate vacancies, EPA, IEP, LEAP vacancies, and you should be able to find them in there. And please feel free to apply if you wish. So how is everybody getting on with that? Has everyone found that okay? Raise your hand or come off mute if you like. Just let me know. Has anyone got any questions? The Bricklayers had a couple of questions at this point, which we were able to sort of cover off. So yeah, over to you guys really. Are you happy with that? Is that okay? Silence. To be fair, the painters were quite quiet yesterday.
Yeah, I'm on your website, just trying to locate the handbook really. I'm on the general information and... Is it under documents, did you say?
Yes, when you go into documents, yeah, it's under there. And then it's under centre documents in there. I'll go to the previous slide. Should be more helpful for you. I mean, we don't have to spend too long on this now. Obviously you can, you can go away and have a look at this at a later time. I just wanted to give you, show you a couple of ways and how you can get to there. Find the handbooks and find some of the key and critical information that's going to be useful to you throughout delivery of this qualification. So I don't want to sort of dwell on this too much, but yeah, just ideally, if you can find it, fantastic. And hopefully, you know, this has been useful for you. You will get these slides following the session today as well. So probably be a bit later this afternoon. And yeah, just let us know if you need any, if you've got any questions. My email address will be on that email alert that comes out. And just let me know, you know, you can come back to me at a later date. There's no worries on that.
So the six hours, 600 hours guiding learning hours for the occupational aspect, is there? That doesn't include the core units presumably?
Core is 400 and the occupational specialism is 600.
So there's a thousand in total?
Yes, a thousand over the two years. And just by way of, you know, to feedback some of the other comments that have come through on other sessions. Centres are looking at a range of delivery models. They're looking at a blended learning model with regards to the practical and the theory-based part of the trade part. So especially in year one. And they're also looking at a blended learning model where they can incorporate any of the occupational specialism or the trade in with the core as well and contextualize that delivery a bit more. So that's what centres are starting to do. They're starting to, they're having a look at the core and people like, where can I, how can I deliver this with elements of plastering in there as well? For example, you know, health and safety being an obvious one that people have started to look at. But also a blended learning model, because obviously in year one, you know, your practical will be limited and the amount of hours you spend on the occupational specialism will be limited. So blending that as much as possible as well. But the beauty of that is obviously if all the learners pass the core components in year one, when it comes to year two, you've got a full year of predominantly practical and theory-based sessions on the occupational specialism alone. So you'll get a lot of time with these learners in year two. And hopefully that'll be good time spending the workshops, developing the hand skills and in the classroom, obviously, developing their knowledge. But again, centres have talked about a blended learning model for that as well. To try and increase time in the workshop as opposed to the classroom. And I think one of the things that, you know, I've mentioned as well on previous sessions is to just give you the reassurance that, you know, it doesn't matter what badge you put on this or, you know, on qualifications we offer, whether it's a T-level or apprenticeship standard. You know, you still apply plaster to a wall in the same method, you know, from spot board or is it a hawke or handball onto a trowel and apply it to the wall accordingly. That hasn't changed just because it's become a T-level. You know, you still do everything you guys do exactly the same. Just it doesn't change just because it's a T-level. The assessments might have changed slightly, but the expectation on the hand skill requirements, et cetera, hasn't changed. Or the knowledge side hasn't changed. So you know, plastering is still plastering. Doesn't matter what you want to badge it up as, T-level, QCF diploma or whatever, plastering is still plastering. And you know, we are more than confident that, you know, our centres and you guys will be able to deliver that no problem. The core is where that'll kick up a few surprises for you, to be honest. And I'm going to go into a few other bits a bit later on how we are looking to support you guys moving forward with that. So hopefully you found that little activity okay. The next part I want you to have a look at is, let's delve into plastering. And what you'll find within the handbook now is, yes, you've always had the learning outcomes and the criteria. That is an absolute given in any qualification, regardless of who it's with. And with everything City and Guilds, we always, especially construction, we always provide a range where we can as well. And the range is just a basic headline topic. Things that need to be considered and possibly covered to achieve the criteria and the learning outcome. What's been added to that is two new sections. And it's what do learners need to learn? And that takes the range and just goes into within a little bit more detail. Giving a bit more depth and breadth to the subject or topic that needs to be taught. And what you can actually do with that is you can cut and paste that out and you can share that with learners. You can share it with them, you know, if you're coming onto that topic next. You know, a bit of pre-reading type of thing, whatever that may look like. It could even be things like a bit of revision material as well. You could even use your phone, you know. If learners wanted to know a bit more about welfare facilities, well, there's a paragraph there tells you pretty much a good bit of detail on what welfare facilities are, et cetera. So there's different ways in which you can use that. And hopefully it's helpful to you, whether you're using it before lessons, during lessons, after lessons. You know, sharing that with learners, print it out, put it in a book, leave it around classrooms and workshops and issue one to every learner, I don't know. But hopefully that part is a bit more helpful to you as now. Then you've got the, I mean, the range was always quite helpful anyway. And what we've done is just gone a little bit more into detail on that. Then you've got the skills. So these skills, it's listed on the right-hand side in the grey box. They relate to what we call the core skills and the general competencies in English maths and digital skills. So the core skills is, you know, it's that trend, isn't it? We're always talking about knowledge skills and behaviour at the minute, whether it's apprenticeships or whether it's this or, you know, other products. And a bit earlier on in the handbook, they're all listed. So if you're looking to map any of them in session plans or schemes of learning, et cetera, then or evidence and that you've covered parts of them, then, you know, that mapping has already been done for you. And you can just again, cut and paste that out and put it into your session plans or schemes of work where required as well. So that is again, quite useful and just demonstrating where, you know, you're developing those core skills and what parts of the qualification are there and designed to develop English and math skills. Especially that's a beginner now, ultimately we're going into the digital world and developing those skills as well. So again, that's just there for you. If you still got the handbook open, just, you know, again, a couple of minutes. Have a look at plastering. Is there any surprises in there? Any topics you want to comment on, any questions? I am not a plasterer. So please don't get too technical with me. But I'm happy to take any feedback, any comments, anything at all you want me to record. Please just let me know and I can take that back accordingly. If you're happy with the way things are, fantastic. So yeah, it's, let's have a chat basically. Let's open discussion and see what people think. If anyone's got any questions, let us know. Let us know. Whilst you're having a look at that, I'll just let you know about one of the other support mechanisms that we've been sort of mulling about internally at City and Guilds and how we can sort of support you guys moving forward as well now. You know, City and Guilds offer an unrivaled platform of support to our centres, whether it's, you know, the technical advisors, your business managers, the industry managers, all of the, you know, content that we have on our platform, such as smart screen. Yes, you have to pay for that. But there is a massive amount of support out there. And I think a lot of times, you know, we kind of miss a trick because I think, you know, we could probably support each other a bit more. And we've discussed this on Ivory event this week. And we used to have the old vocational or trade groups through BAC years ago. You know, the joiners will get together, the brickies, the plasters and the painters and stuff. And it might even just be, you know, a couple of hours, let's have a twist and put the world to rights. And a couple of hours maybe sharing resources, sharing some good practices, what people do. And they seem to work really well. Given the vast amount of staffing changes that's happened over the past four, five year, they kind of depleted and they kind of took a back seat because there was sort of more important things to focus on, whether it was the introduction of the apprenticeship standards, et cetera. The new education inspection framework that came out from Ofsted and those type of things. So what we're looking to do is trying to sort of take that and make it virtual. And the best way we've, after discussions we've had, and the best way we can do that and engage with as many people as possible is via LinkedIn. The social network platform for, you know, for careers and professionals and everything else in between. So what we've discussed is creating a group and it'll be just for construction T-levels. Now, we already have a construction City and Guilds group. And you know, if you're on LinkedIn, please search for City and Guilds Construction and request to join. Because within that group, we give a lot of high-level information, whether it's newsletters, whether it's things like this, come and register on this webinar, et cetera, whatever that may look like. But when we've discussed this T-level construction LinkedIn group, that we would create it, but it will be run by you guys. You know, Russell is doing, you know, is delivering it up in his college and Stephen in his college and Lee in his college. You know, why is Russell and Stephen creating a whole bank of resources to deliver all of this new material? Why does Russell do half, Stephen do half, come together, share resources, that type of thing? Open discussion about maybe industry placements, you know, is block release better than day release for the industry placements? Is, you know, that could be regionalized. It's a north west, it'll be different from say the north east or even the London regions. And just have it for that type of platform really, and just let it be open to members to, yeah, let's, you know, support each other in preparing to deliver this from September. Because as much as, you know, plastering is still plastering, a lot of it will be new, especially things like the assessment windows and that. So we would put reminders on there, you know, registrations need to happen now, get registered on this and this. And just prompts and reminders. And it might be that we put out a new product or something that we need to support you with. And we need you guys to have a quick look at it and let us know. And what that group will be for is basically the providers for you guys to share the practices. And it could be something, say, the Bricklayers are doing that's useful to you guys or what you plasters are doing that's useful to the joiners. And then let's get some, you know, cross-trade sharing of good practices as well. So there's a lot of positives to create in this group. The only negative really is that we need the members to be active on it as well. And that's where we'll be trying to encourage people to post experiences, especially year one. You know, if you guys are delivering from September, how have you found it off the back? You know, what does the first half term look like, you know, between September and October? So that type of thing as well. So if you think that will be useful, let us know. If you don't, let us know. We are hoping to get it created by the end of the week. So hopefully it'll be, it'll be ready to go. And we'll probably be sending an email to everyone that's attended or maybe hasn't attended these sessions this week just to let them know that it's there if they want to request to join it. So that's just a couple of other things we're doing in the background as well. Hopefully you've had a couple of minutes to have a look at the qualification handbook and not been too distracted with me talking. And yeah, does anyone have any questions about any of the content of the occupational handbook? Sorry, the qualification handbook on the occupational specialism? Anything, any comments, any questions on plastering? Anything in there you think, man, maybe it shouldn't be or anything that we missed? Um, is it deliverable? That type, I think.
Yeah, so Jason, have you got any, uh, is there any resources on, on, on the website or is it all through smart screen? Is it the same, is it the same resources that you use?
Yeah.
Is there a separate, separate, uh, bank of, of resources?
I'm gonna come on to resources shortly. In fact, um, I'll go on to that now if you like. Um, so I'll talk about the core component first. So because for the occupational specialisms, whether it's plastering, carpentry, joinery, we've always had an offer there of, of resources. So it's what we've currently got on smart screen for the technicals, for the diplomas. Um, they're currently, you know, available via smart screen as well. And the textbooks have always been out there for the occupational specialisms. Um, and our new range of textbooks, they come through HODA Education and I think the plastering one, I think that's out now. Um, I think the paint and decorate one was the last one to get released. Um, so there's already been a sort of a vast amount of resources out there to support the delivery of, say, the plastering. Where there hasn't been so much resource and where we think there's going to be a greater need for resources is on the core component. So what HODA Education are doing is they're creating textbooks purely on the core component. And those are going to be available in October, November this year, um, and the fees are on there. What we're also doing for the core is via smart screen, we're creating another bank of resources, you know, what you would generally get from smart screen for the core. So that's everything that's going to be available for the core. For the occupational specialism and for the trades, a couple of comments that came through this week was, you know, could we have something practical like what we have for the apprentices? So on smart screen, we have the apprentice task manuals, I think they're called. You know, could we have something similar to that for T levels? And it might be that we use the same thing. It could be still relevant. It could be, it could be really good, um, resource for centres to purchase and use with the development of the practical uh, skills required for this. So we, we're kind of looking at that and we're looking at other bits and pieces in the background with regard to the occupational specialisms, whether we just group all of our content and badge it as a level two or a level three, and then you could purchase that and access whatever you want. You know, that, those discussions are ongoing as well. The other thing just to mention from a HODA perspective is HODA Education review their textbooks every two or three years, I think he said. And, um, what they do in this, and what they're gonna do in the next round of review of the textbooks is they're gonna look to introduce other extra, uh, parts so that that supplements T levels as well. But again, that's probably another couple of years down the line. But the other things that they've discussed is, um, longer-term publishing for the occupational specialism, which I've just mentioned. Um, but then looking at things like assessment support on the occupational specialism and the core. So things like, um, question banks. Uh, for exam prep, whether that's on both the core and the occupational specialism. Um, assessment tasks, you know, formative assessment tasks, that type of thing. Um, so that's kind of up in the air really, but what HODA need is ideas from you guys basically. You know, we do feed into Thomas at HODA and his email addresses on the bottom of the screen there. You know, we feed in feedback we've had from centres, you know, they really need a bit more support on practical. And we feed that back internally as well, mine, to our resource team to say, look, you know, we need something for practical, uh, and theory for the occupational specialisms as well. And like I say, it could be that we just, if the apprentice task manual is relevant and useful for centres to use to prepare learners for the practical on this, it could be that, you know, we, we re-badge it and, and set it for T levels as well. Obviously, everything with smart screen comes at a cost apart from part of the content that is, is available free. But, um, yeah, anything we do on smart screen, there will be costs attached to that. But again, um, we need people, we need, you know, we need consultants, we need associates. We need feedback really, and we need people to be going to Thomas and saying, look, you know, we need this, we need that, we need the other, and we're happy to pay for it. Um, you know, and, and similarly, you know, Thomas needs that and we at City and Guilds need that as well. And that's where we need your help to help us help you basically. Um, so hopefully that answers your question, Russell. Um, and if, like I said, if you are interested in getting involved in any of that type of work, um, please, please let us know and, uh, we can get you involved as soon as possible really.
So just, just going back to, uh, the books that you said have been, have been made available or have been published. Now, I have just ordered one actually, a level one, level two, but that's more targeted towards the technical, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, as an ebook. So do you know what the book is called for T levels? Have you, have you got that to hand or not?
That's what's on the screen now. So that'll be the core one. They're only creating textbook at the minute for the core component.
Okay.
They're not creating one for the occupational specialism as such. But if you've, if, um, they will be obviously, uh, the plastering one should, if it's a HODA education one. Um, I think they do, is it, they do one at level two and then they pitch one at level three. Um, I'm just, one second, I'm just gonna go on mute because I've got.
Yeah, fine.
I'll have a look, see you. Yeah, so for architectural joinery inside carpentry, they've combined them and they've created one for level two and one for level three. Um, and what I've fed back to HODA is, look, we need them, I think they did that at both levels because carpentry and joinery still had a level two apprenticeship standard and a level three apprenticeship standard. And what I've fed back to HODA is even though bricklaying, plastering and paint and decorating only have a level two standard, they are gonna still need content pitched at level three. Um, so that's been fed back as well. So, and hopefully that'll help influence their decision to say, right, we're gonna create a, a level three textbook for, say, plastering. Um, but like anything, um, they have to go through business cases and stuff to make sure that it's financially viable to create and publish and sell these products. So again, that's where we need you guys to help us with feedback. Um, and ultimately they need writers as well. So when you look at the publishing dates for the two core handbooks on the screen, construction is, is gonna get released after BSE and there's actually less content in construction, but what happened was one of the two authors had to pull out unfortunately. So they had to then go and get another, which is ultimately delayed stuff. Um, so, you know, it, it is important that we, we get your help in either pushing ideas to HODA Education or you guys going to HODA directly, telling them what you need and want. And obviously if there's enough of an interest there, then, then they will create something. But like I said, the, the open to very much um, open to any discussions and opportunities where they can produce a product that's gonna support you guys as best as possible. And like I said, they're gonna produce, um, another thing they're gonna produce is a mapping grid. So the plastering textbook, textbooks that are out there now, they're gonna produce a mapping grid that maps their textbook to the T level. So hopefully that'll be helpful as well, um, in just bridging that gap slightly until hopefully there is a product out there that'll fully cover everything. Hopefully that helps.
Yeah, yeah, it does. Thank you.
No problem. Do we have any other questions? Steve, Nolly, have you got any questions? Nope. Cool. Right, I'm gonna move it on a little bit. Um, this is kind of, I feel like I'm, I'm on a charity appeal here. But this is where I'm gonna be appealing to you guys to, um, fill in a few, uh, surveys basically. They don't take long at all, I will be honest. Um, very, very quick. So for every provider, so Russell, um, yourself, I think you're Blackpool, I think I saw your email. Um, what we need is one person from each provider that's delivering in September 2021 to complete that pre-approval form. Now, that's mandatory for every centre. So Stephen, if nobody from your centre has completed that yet, that needs to be done as soon as possible because we've already started the approval process ready for September because as much as you might be an eligible provider, we've still got to go through the full approval process with our, um, with our centres. What I will say is that through that process, you'll be issued one, uh, an individual who will support you through it. And they're called a TQA, okay? Um, Technical Qualification Assistant, something like that, or Technical Quality Assistant. Um, and they'll, they'll support you through that process after you've done your pre-approval form. So if, um, if your centre hasn't done that yet, that's a, a priority that needs doing as soon as possible, please.
Okay, I'll find out, yeah.
Brilliant, thank you. The next one is a form that we also created and this is where, you know, myself and Rob and other colleagues, you know, Michael from A L and et cetera. We've delivered quite a lot of web, webinars since April last year and a lot of people were registering for these webinars, um, and, and for these events this week as well, where they're not delivering in September, they're not a September, they're not a wave two provider basically. And what we found earlier on this week is that, you know, the, the bricklaying and the carpentry joinery sold out and sold out quite quickly. Now, I had EQAs on there, there was, you know, other people on there as well that, that really wasn't relevant for. Um, and what that did was that took away half a dozen tickets, what then people who want and need to be on these calls couldn't get on. So what we're trying to do is, is target our comments a bit more smartly so that, you know, giving you guys as much notice as possible, whether that's 24, 72 hours, whatever it may be to say, look, we have this event coming up, we are gonna have to send out an e-bulletin or an email alert which goes to anybody that's signed up for T level information. Um, but we could send it to you guys first to give you basically first refusal. So the bottom link there, the second one in red, that's where any and everybody who is involved in delivering T levels within your centre can complete that. Doesn't have to be a head of department. Um, they can complete it, directors, but tutors, a set, whomever is gonna have any form and delivering the T levels. We need your details so that we can get in touch with you and say, right, we, we're offering this plastering session, it's coming up on this date. This is the link in which you can go and, uh, book yourself a ticket or book yourself onto it, register onto it. Um, and you've got 72 hours before we make this public. Um, so basically you guys, the guys that we need on these sessions are getting on these sessions basically. So that's those two links there. Last couple of slides for me, then I'll, I'll open it up for Q and A is, um, on the slide there is just a quick Q, there's a QR code and another link, um, albeit in black this time. And that's just to a quick survey and that's for kind of myself, Rob, Alison as well, who's on the call, and other colleagues internally, just, um, again, just to, to get a little bit of information of how you found the session. If there's anything you think we can improve on and that you'd like us to cover in the future, um, you know, please let us know. Um, via that survey there. And again, these slides are gonna get sent out at the end. So you can follow this up and do those, um, later on today or tomorrow or whatever. There's no great rush. Um, but I, I do believe that survey closes Tuesday next week. So, because we do need to, we have to collect that information as well and report all this back to IFED so that, uh, they know that we're doing a good job as well. And then lastly from me is, it's a bit of a plea for, another plea for help really. The Department of Education is in the process of reforming the level three and below qualification offer. And this could, it says could, but it will, it will absolutely seriously affect the curriculum offer that you're able to provide in the future. Now, obviously just think about the amount of level two learners you have and who don't progress to level three. So City and Guilds are currently responding to the level two and below call for evidence. And this is where we're consulting with all you guys and we've had so many people offer to support us in this process. And what we do is we, we collate all that evidence. And then what we do is we, we present that to the government, to the DFE and to the regulatory bodies and make them, get them to try and understand the risks involved in this reform process and the impact it can have on our learners, but also our industry, because a lot of level two learners do progress into industry. Um, our apprenticeship standards, for example, are only pitched at level two for bricklaying, plastering and paint and decorating. So again, you know, can't believe they, they even considering this when, when you look at the apprenticeships, out of the four main trades, you know, 75% are only pitched at level two. But this is where we need you guys again to help us with this. And I know that others throughout the week have been more than supportive and have agreed to give up sort of 10, 15 minutes of their time. And you may feel that, you know, what, what difference can I make? Um, you can make a massive difference, you know, a massive, massive difference. And it doesn't matter if it's been two or three people from the same college. Because, you know, you, you, you're representing different disciplines and that's what's important as well. So if you've got 10 minutes, 15 minutes available in the next, that says 10 days, because that was from Monday, but it'll be about seven days now. Um, seven or six days, if you've got, in the next week basically, if you've got 10, 15 minutes spare, please let us know. Um, just put yes in the chat bar. Um, and what I'll do is I'll take your email address and I'll just share it with a colleague internally and they will be in touch. Um, or maybe in touch if they need to be to, uh, to get those comments from you and collate those evidence ready to present to, uh, to the government. So if you have got 10 minutes, please just put in the chat bar, uh, yes, happy to help, whatever you want, um. And I will, I will forward that on accordingly. And again, I can't stress how important this will be. Um, not just for learners to progress from other courses onto a T level, but it'll, it'll affect, you know, pretty much your entire full-time curriculum. Um, you know, and, and in some colleges, that is the bread and butter of everything they do. So it, it is really, really important that we try and get as much, much of this evidence collated as possible. So again, if you are able to help, um, and you've got 10 minutes spare, just let us know, either say yes now or put it in the chat bar. Um, but we need to, we need to jump on this pretty sharpish, to be honest. And other than that, that's everything from me. So does anybody have any questions, anything anyone would like us to, uh, to pick up, discuss, anything at all?
So Jason, I think you mentioned about the practical synoptic, uh, they're, they're at the end of the two years. Are the, the theory tests, are they at the end of the two years as well or is that, are they staggered?
There is no theory test for, for the occupational specialism. It's incorporated into the synoptic. So it's a hybrid assessment that covers the knowledge and the practical. So the range of tasks within that synoptic will cover both elements.
Okay.
So there's only two exams and those are on the core. And then you've got your employer set project assessment as well, which is a bit more of a report-based, scenario-based um, assignment that the learners will produce. That actually comes before the two core exams and that's done in year one and there's.
Right, so there's two, there's two, there's two core exams, written exams, and then there's a, there's a practical synoptic at the end of the two years.
Yeah, but your core exams come at the end of year one.
Okay.
And then your practical synoptic comes at the end of year two.
So do people need to pass them, uh, end of year one exams before they, before they carry on with the course? Or do they carry on and then they can retake them at the end of the second year or how does that work?
Yeah, so there's a retake window, um, I think it's October, October, November in, in the second year. Um, so if they fail the employer set project or they fail any of the core exam papers, whether it's paper one or paper two, there is an opportunity for them to retake them in the, um, I think it's October, November in, in year two. If they fail practical, the problem is there's only one assessment window for the practical each year. So if they fail a practical at the end of year two, they've got another 12-month wait to do that again.
Okay, and these, these exams are, are they're all on set dates or they're like the technicals?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be on, they'll be, they'll be, the set dates will be sent out accordingly, um, when, when they're released.
Okay, and ideally, uh, are we better off, uh, with the course content? Is that better off done on an E portfolio? I know you've got your own, haven't you? But there's obviously other, there's others out there, isn't there?
That's entirely up to you. Um, there's no evidence required. There's no, you know, you don't need to produce any evidence for this qualification. Obviously they all do the, um, the exams accordingly and they do the, uh, the practical synoptic at the end of year two. So there's no real need for you to use an E portfolio. Um, obviously a VLE is, is obviously beneficial to your learners, getting resources on there, the ebooks and stuff. Because all them ebook, all the textbooks I mentioned there from HODA, they're gonna be available as an ebook as well. Um, you know, so there's, uh, resources that you can get on your VLE and, and whatnot. So hopefully that'll be helpful. I don't think there's any need for an E portfolio as such.
As long as they can pass the tests and they're, they're capable of, and they've got the knowledge and everything, that's, as far as you're concerned, that's.
That's it. It's, it's, uh, yeah, it's exam-based assessments. Um, there, there's no need for a portfolio of evidence. Um, there, there's no need for a portfolio of evidence. Alison, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, sorry, just, hi Russell, just, it, it's just very similar to, uh, uh, sort of, I suppose, an applied general type qualification or A level in this case, where we don't require any evidence to, to see any evidence whatsoever. Our evidence is we mark the external exam and the employer set project. You mark the occupational specialism and we externally moderate it. And that's all we require as evidence. But your own centre for Ofsted purposes might need you to show progression through the qualification for your.
Yeah, yeah, well, well, they, they would, they would as a normal thing anyway, or, or as a standard thing anyway. But I was just asking the question, really.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Thanks Alison.
Do we have any other questions from anybody? Obviously it doesn't have to be right now, following this session today, you'll get, um, you'll get a copy of these slides and my email address will be on there as well. So, you know, please feel free to, to ping any questions you may have across, um, to us, that's no problem at all. But again, just to, if, if you are able to help with that 10, 15 minutes chat with one of my colleagues just for a call of evidence on the level two reform, um, please let us know so that, um, we can get that set up as soon as possible and not take up too much of your time. So if you're are able to help, just please let us know. Okay, there doesn't seem to be any more questions coming through, so I'm going to stop the recording and I'm going to end it there. Um, obviously, like I've said before, if you've got any questions, please don't hesitate to get in touch with us. Um, and yeah, hopefully in the future we can get on the road, um, not when it's snowing like today, but hopefully we can get on the road soon and, uh, be able to deliver our networks and support you guys when it comes to starting to deliver this in September. Um, in the meantime, let us know if you need anything, please stay safe and all the best for 2021. Best of luck.
Okay, thanks for your time, Jason. It's been very informative and, and helpful, so thank you. Thanks Alison, thanks Lee, thanks Stephen.
Thank you guys. Thanks very much.